Good morning. We will call the meeting to order for the Brookings County Commission for Tuesday, April 19th, 2023. Please rise for the pledge. Number three on the agenda is an invitation for a citizen to schedule a time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. There's a five-minute time limit per person. Anyone wanting to speak during the agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during this agenda item. Any requested action item may be scheduled for a future meeting date. We have two people that have signed in. First one is Rick Wyble.
Good morning. Rick Wyble from Elkton, South Dakota. And thank you, wonderful county staff members as well. The work that you do is absolutely phenomenal for our county. In South Dakota, under God, the people rule, not the machines. We need to understand that. I want to talk about two things today. Number one is I've been active this early session in the legislature. We are responsible for 14 of the 16 new election integrity bills that passed in the legislature. You are aware of some of the complaints that I lodged against the county and also giving it an F grade. I would like to also come back before you to offer assistance in helping the county understand some of the new legislation that has passed that will be effective July 1, and also help the county understand some of its obligations that it has missed under the Help America Vote Act specifically. I have asked for the cast vote records here of the county. And what's interesting about that is when we look at the county auditor's responsibility and we look at the way that they handle money and the way that they handle ballots, there's actually some equivalency there. So, for example, in their accounting system, they have something that's called a transaction log, where every single keystroke is recorded as to who put in dollars, who took out dollars, who adjusted any of the ledgers. The same is true in the election equipment, and that's called a cast vote record. What they don't understand is that the cast vote record is actually created in the tabulator and it is on the thumb drives and also the hard drive of the machine. However, we've done amiss, we have not purchased the software to decrypt the files from the cast vote records so that our staff can evaluate the performance of the machines, which is a requirement under the security protocol under the Help America Vote Act and the EAC Voluntary Voting System Guidelines, which our state adopted, that all of our machines are required to abide by. But we're missing it. We're not even reviewing the thumb drives to essential unencrypted files, the log files, that show us the number of ballots, whether or not there were errors, and giving the descriptions. Those pieces are important for election integrity and security. The other piece of this is just as a kind of rewind, because not all of you are aware, I am a certified network engineer. I guide clients through the DOD CMM 2.0 requirements. And in 2025, it'll actually be illegal for me to state that. I also assist in data recoveries, three-letter agency investigations, and I just completed a case in Minnesota that now I have more time to spend here in South Dakota to kind of help you with security issues. I'm also advising you as a secondary item with the EV charging machines. I think it's really a bad idea for the county to basically have these charging stations in our county, because number one, you are not equipped to handle the security on those devices, nor are you equipped to handle the liability with those devices. Just like the cellphone charging station at the library and the EV charging stations that are starting to crop up around town, I can hack them and get the information off of them to basically find out where you've driven, where you've gone. That's not a good liability piece, and you guys are not prepared to analyze the security and to provide proper oversight of those devices, nor is that apparent in your contract that you're about to sign today. So, I would hedge against that as well. And when we look at everything across the country, your credit cards, your IDs, all of that's been hacked. So somehow, we're going to say that the government has the ability to protect us on our charging stations and also our elections? That's to set aside reality. And so, we have to do a better job when it comes to security at all levels, and we have to understand the risk. I'm here to help, and I'm willing to work with you so that we can actually be the number-one county in South Dakota, as I continue to push for South Dakota to be the number-one state in election integrity. I know how to hack these systems. I know how they're vulnerable, and I have the evidence that I can share with you, and I presented some of that evidence in front of the legislature, and that's why we were so successful. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Is Jeanette Gibbons.
...to follow, but my name is Jeanette Gibbons. I live here in Brookings. And as Rick stated, we are here to help. And I think we can see many problems that we're facing here locally, across our state, and across our nation. So, let's just knuckle down and get to it. And maybe you get tired of getting emails from me. Maybe you get tired of me coming here and speaking to you. I'm pretty persistent. And we're almost two and a half years out since the 2020 election. And there are people who have devoted their lives, who have given up their careers, their wealth, to try to correct the type of election fraud that we are dealing with here. Not just here, 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 all over our country. Oh, here, here, all over the world. Anyplace where these machines have been led into the borders, elections are running those countries, and it's not the voice of the people. So, let's get it fixed up. The only one that benefits from fraudulent elections are the ones who don't want fair elections. So, I have a list again of Seth Keschel's 10 Points to True Election Integrity, and I like it. It's a brief list, and I think there's many things we could do right here. Clean out the voter rolls, ban all electronic elections equipment, voter ID with paper ballots only, ban mail-in voting, asterisk, because there's exceptions, ban early voting, another asterisk, drastically smaller precincts. And that one I will repeat as a request on our agenda. Let's talk about switching from the vote centers back to our precincts. It's tough to get workers at those precincts. I don't think so anymore. I have a pretty strong core group of people that I think I could call and say, "Let's go work the elections, folks," and you get a couple more of your friends to come with. So, I think that's a non-argument against going back to precincts, and going back to precincts would take care of some of the other issues automatically. Ban ballot harvesting, election day as a holiday. I think that's a great idea. New reporting requirements for transparency and heavy prison sentences for all who commit fraud. So, this is a Seth Keschel list of how he presents ideas to clean up our elections. And then, he followed up with a recent post in his blog, in his Substack blog, of 10 reasons why I may be wrong about the 2020 elections. One through 10, blank. This is another one of those men who's devoted his life and time to trying to correct the type of evil and what's going on in our elections. He's a military vet. He has quite a history himself. I also left a hard copy with you of upcoming meeting in May. So, we've heard plenty from the side that say our elections are all fair, square, and all hunky-dory, and we don't have anything to discuss other than our conspiracy theories. Here's two gentlemen who have also devoted a great deal of their time to what's going on with the election fraud, and they have the evidence. The evidence is available if people care to listen. And why don't we want to hear both sides of the story, even if we're firm and square in the idea that the elections are fair, and I'm on the other side saying the elections are not fair? I listen to both sides. In the end of the day, fair elections are good for all of us. So, I'm remiss to understand why people are balking against steps that we can do to clean up our elections. On the subject of the electric vehicle charging stations, I was interested in that subject with the city when they were looking at it. And I was listening to discussions of them adding three more stations, which I believe they have. I was at the meeting when that was approved. I believe it was three more in addition to the ones on the south side of our building. And I heard about the great need to have this extra charging, or these extra charging stations. I'm not convinced of that need. So, I'm coming at this from a common sense standpoint. I asked for records of January through June of 2022. It was actually June 22nd. Yes. So, January 1st through June 22nd, because that was the current date when I asked for the information. So, I have data from 172 days. The charging station on the south side of the building here, the only one we had at that time, was used for 251 hours, 17 minutes, 23 seconds. And at each one of those charging stations, there are two hookups. And I have never gone past the station and seen two vehicles hooked up to it at the same time. So, looking at 172 days and 251 hours, they collected $305.95. And so, the two connections there, over 172 days, each one had about 126 hours of use over a six-month period. So, I too would ask you to refrain. I thought Rick's argument about the legal ramifications was excellent. I had not even considered that. Please put a hold on getting yourselves into the electrical vehicle station charging business. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is letter four.
Approve.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, changes, additions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Number five, consent agenda items. They are approval of the minutes, approval of the travel requests, approval of personnel action notices, approval of cellular authorizations, and the approval of the human services report. Is there a motion to approve?
Approve.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vanderwal.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number six, approval of the claims. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Target.
Discussion, comments on the claims. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwal.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. On to department head reports. Sheriff, we'll get started with you. Okay. Lori?
Good morning. Today, we have the first quarter transfers that were in your packet. I did also include a summary on the elderly tax freeze. The application deadline was April 1st, but I do want residents to know, those who qualify for the income guidelines, single-family, roughly $30,000; combined income, roughly $38,000. If you did miss the April 1st deadline, you still can apply through our office, and we'll help you get started with that process. You can always petition the commission to accept your late application. We had 112 applications given out. Only 76 were returned. Of the unturned applications, they are contacted, and the reasons stated were nine were not applying this year, 24 gave no response, and three had either died or moved out of the county. Of the 10 denials, we had nine over the income limit and one over the house value limit, which is roughly $208,000. So, the numbers stay pretty regular from year to year. The wind tower breakdown, county gets 35% of that money. The townships get 15, and the schools get 50%. This money comes to us every April, and we apportion it out in May. So, you can see there the different wind towers and who's getting the money on those. Otherwise, first half of property taxes are due this April. You can pay on first floor of the government center. There is a drop box in the hallway. There's a drop box on the west side of the building. If you mail your tax payment in, be sure it is postmarked by April 30. And you can also pay online on our website using a credit card. There is a convenience fee of usually 2.5%. American Express is 5%. So... And then, I emailed each of you some information on storage in the room next door that I'd like to get, set it up as a secure storage area. The information of as to what I want to put in there and everything is in the information I sent you. So, just approval to kind of go forward with that. It is going to be presented to the joint power boards for approval. So, thoughts on that? Okay to take some of the dead space in there?
Comments on that? Looks like it.
Good.
Okay.
That's really all I've got.
All right. Also, we have an action item to approve first quarter transfers as per a budget appropriations. So, do you need a motion for that?
Move approval.
Second.
Second. Okay. All in favor, say aye. We also have some be noted items. Auditors account for the treasurer, payroll additive totals, highway expenditure report, and register of deed statement fees collected. Anything else on that? All right. So, we'll take care of those, and we'll move on to Richard.
Good morning. I believe you have a staff report to read if there are any questions on that. Last week, I gave a K4 presentation to a couple classes up to SDSU on the K4 process, the application they do locally and what they require here in Brookings County. And then, they do a mock application for their class, and they have a, present that to a mock zoning board, so they kind of get in practice to see what they need to do for getting back to their own operation, what applying for a K4 large animal feeding operation, details, what it requires. So, we have our zoning meeting coming up. We did, the plat on the agenda was approved by majority of the vote of the zoning members. So, that's all that I have.
Ms. T, do you have anything?
Good morning. The townships that were involved in the 2023 gopher sign up. So, it's just a yes, simple yes or a no, next to each township. Just wanted to give you that information, and that information is going in the paper. So, that way, everybody knows that which township is involved in the gopher program. And then, unless there's any questions on that. And then, I also have the total, or excuse me, the townships involved in having the county spray. So, I've handed that out also. It's the colorful one. We're about where we were last year minus one township. So, I think we're doing okay. And that would be, and then, come this fall, I believe this fall is the easiest time, or at the end of the spring run, to compile this information. And I'll bring this exact form back to you guys so you can see what we've done in the townships. I just want to, unless there's any questions on that, I have one more thing. We're starting up the weed department on the 24th, next Monday. I have two guys coming back, my half and half, my highway guys. They'll come back to the weed department, and then, the ATV crew will start right around May 15. I don't have anything unless you've got questions for myself.
A little more flooding this year. How is that going to affect your spraying?
Well, we won't be spraying where it's flooding.
Yeah.
And I regret our wet weather we're having. I'm hoping, what bothers me about the flooding is where we took care of the cattails last year. It was dry. There was weeds. Now, there's water. We're going to play catch-up with that. We'll do the best we can, and obviously, we'll stay about 15 feet away from the water.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. We've got a couple scheduled agendas, but eight, regular business, action to-
Do you want to just mention quick, too, that Brian submitted the highway report?
Highway Department Head submitted his report, so that will be part of the packet also. You can read through that. All right. Letter A, Action to Approve Resolution 23-18, Platte Block 1, Preston Church Edition in the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 20, Township 112 North, Range 51 West, in the 5th Primoridium, Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
To approve.
Target.
Second. Discussion on this. Anything, Richard?
It was approved unanimously by the zoning board at their April meeting. So, just basically a property line adjustment.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwal.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter B, Action to Approve Resolution 23-19, A Bridge Inspection Program Resolution for Use of South Dakota Department of Transportation Retainer Contracts. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
Discussion, comments. Anything on that? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwal.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter C, Action to Approve Agreement 23-24, State of South Dakota Department of Transportation Joint Powers Agreement for Weed Spraying Services by Brookings County. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Ms. T, comments on this?
This is to spray the DOT. We're excited. I'm excited. Just asking for your request to sign, or excuse me, for you to sign the joint power. When the weeds start growing, we can start spraying the DOT and maybe get ahead.
Do we have enough product? I mean, because we didn't know for sure if we had this or not.
We do, and I've been in communication with a couple of the vendors. I got to get to them today how much chemical we might need. So, I do have that kind of rat hold away.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vanderwal.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion- Agreement 23-25, A Three-Year Lease Agreement with ChargePoint Inc. for the electric charging station at the government center. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion, comments.
This was discussed at Joint Powers Board as well, as it's a shared cost with the city because of its location here at the shared government center. This is a three-year agreement, reflects about a 2.24% increase over the past three years. So, yes, this has been in place for the past three years. So, this was renewing that contract.
Okay. Further discussion, comments?
Management of the contract is handled by the city?
Can you repeat that?
Manage of the charging facilities is managed by the city? Or do we have any active role in actual management?
No.
All right. Further discussion. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwal.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter E, Action to Approve Fireworks Display at Meadow Creek Golf Course in Volga on Friday, June 9th at dusk as part of the Volga Old Timers Day Celebration. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
Second. Discussion.
This is an annual request from the City of Volga for their fireworks display that they hold Friday night of the Old Timers Weekend. The reason that this comes to us is the location that they actually shoot the fireworks off from is not in city limits. It's out kind of way on the east end of the driving range of the golf course, and that part is not annexed into the city. So, it's still in the county, so it has to come to us for an annual request to hold the fireworks display.
Okay. Comments, discussion. Sheriff, any concerns? Okay. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Both same sign. Motion carries. Letter F, An Action to Approve Request to Fill Vacancy for a Full-Time Female Correctional Officer in the Sheriff's Office. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
Discussion.
This position is open due to a resignation.
Any further discussion, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Both same sign. Motion carries. Letter G, An Action to Approve Updates to the Cellular Authorization Plan. Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Target.
Second. Discussion, comments.
This was discussed at the work session that we had a couple of weeks ago. This just updates the form. It doesn't update the amounts. It doesn't change anybody's dollar amounts for what they're receiving, except for, I think, IT Administrator Sean Plowman. It just updates the form to more accurately reflect what we're actually using for the cellphones right now with staff.
Okay. Any more further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Both same sign. Motion carries. All right. We're a little early, but see our applicants here, so we'll move ahead with our scheduled agenda item for the 9:00 AM public hearing and action to approve a special events license from GDWB LLC, Doing Business as Lemke's Bar and Grill, for a wedding on June 3, 2023, at Bennett Barn. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Is there a second? Second. Okay. All right. We will open this up for public hearings, so all proponents, please come up and state your name, and go ahead.
I'm Weston Bird, owner of GDWB LLC, and we are in the barn. We've got, they're both weddings. I don't know, do I have to do them separately?
We have to do them separately, and that's fine. You can just save for both of them right now if you're fine. So, okay.
Yeah. June 3 and September 9, both weddings.
Okay.
Same place, Bennett Barn.
Gotcha. Good. All right. Thank you. Is there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Any opponents? Okay. Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments from the commission. Any concerns, Sheriff? All right. Let's call the roll. Let's call the roll.
Johnson.
Upstein.
Hostler.
Hi.
Vanderwall.
Hi.
Bartley.
Hi.
Krogman.
Hi.
Motion carries.
All right, we'll move on to the 9:05, public hearing and action to approve a special events license for GDWB LLC doing business as Lemkey's Bar and Grill for a wedding on September 9th, 2023 at Bennett Barn. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion, oh, excuse me, we'll open the public hearing again. Any proponents? Any more proponents, all right, any opponents for the public hearing? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, comments, discussion from the commission. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Hostler.
Hi.
Vanderwall.
Hi.
Bartley.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Krogman.
Hi.
Motion carries.
All right, good to go.
Thank you.
You bet. We've got 9:10, we'll hold off on that one for a little bit in case we have, we're 10 minutes out on that. So we'll move next on to the agenda to the commission department director's report.
As part of my report, I did and that was in your packet, so things noted in red were all updates. Took some things off to kind of clean it up a little bit as well. Country Club Bridge Road, that's our big grant project that we're working on this year. Went into the rural access infrastructure, applications for those eight, eight townships were approved for funding here in 2023. They'll be working with Brian to, you know, review that and get those scheduled. Future planning, just updated some of the dollar amounts that we do have assigned in the various funds for different highway related projects, future economic development highway projects, the highway shop. And then the discussion at the work session about looking for a new location for the highway department potentially. Didn't have any updates on Beta. 214th Street Banner again was hired to do the feasibility and H&amp;H study. We have a first meeting scheduled for that next Monday. So we'll be meeting with them then and we do have $3 million assigned for that project in the general fund as well. The I-29 overpass, as of the time of doing this report last week, we spent about 1.1 million of our $2 million commitment. I am working, I know Commissioner Bartley, you had asked for, to kind of see a breakdown of what that looks like. We're working on that, we have that about done and we can get that sent out too. Drainage, this information was given to me by, by Bob Hill, all of these dates and what had happened. So you can kind of read through there as far as the Midary Township drainage issue. It looks like that the, they plan to hold a public hearing in June after the crops have been planted so that there's, farmers have a chance to get in here for that public hearing. Basically, I think Bob's then after that going to look, look for, look to the county commission to decide if you want to continue, continue with that topic or not. And he did give currently, kind of to date, what has been spent, just over $36,000 on that project. Samara Avenue project over on the west side of Volga continues. The city did receive a $450,000 grant, they've also received a local commitment of about $600,000, I think, maybe 650,000, I can't remember exactly. So there's that, the, we do have some dollars assigned in our general fund for that project. Right now, we're in a 50/50 cost share with the city for engineering fees for that project, again with Banner. Also on Monday, the 24th of April, we'll be meeting kind of in tandem, 214th and then Samara or vice versa to get an update on where we're at with that project. The commission projects funds approximately 4.6 million to date of the 6.8 available has been, has been spent or has been allocated. Just a list of, of the things that we have used the commission projects funding for there as well. Capital, facilities, capital improvement planning, government center this year, we're planning some AV upgrades. Courthouse, the security upgrades, we are underway with that project. And 75% of that project is a UJS grant, will get reimbursed back. Safe and Secure, as you do recall, got that, got that, basically that bid or submitted the RFP that was approved for that project. So that is moving forward. The RFP for the courthouse roof, that deadline was actually Friday and we had a couple submittals there, so we'll be reviewing those. And then, I think Dustin had mentioned at the last meeting as well, some additional office space for GFNP and some 4H storage, so that's just a project there to kind of keep in mind as we move forward out there. Personnel, we did hold employee manual review meetings with all employees early, earlier this year. We did do a major kind of overhaul of the handbook that it was, and it took effect in January. And so we had those review, review meetings with all staff to highlight some of the more important changes. So that is the work plan updates. Is there anything else that you can think of off the top of your head?
We want to, if you want to go down a little bit here for the highways, facilities and capital improvement. I'm wondering if the highway, we shouldn't have some type of, because we're starting to look into different locations potentially or discussion of building where we're at. And that probably would, good update for that one.
Any other comments, suggestions? The work plan? It's good, thank you.
Yep, and then the surplus cash analysis information, I did get used off of the, the information that we get from Lori each month. March, we're at 18%, that is higher, I think our average is about 11.4% is our 10-year average. So we are well above that 10-year average, so we're in good shape there. Of course, we continue to monitor that as we, as the year goes on. And then the last thing I have are just some upcoming dates. Today, most of us are heading out to Pier for spring workshop. And then May 5th, we did get an invitation for the grand reopening and open house for ID8 architecture, 3:30 to 6:30 on Main Avenue. United Way has its ribbon cutting from 3 to 6 on May 18th at their new location, 908 Hope Drive here in town. Memorial Day, offices will be closed on that Monday. Kind of looking out a little bit further, we do have the city and county safety week planned for June 12th through the 16th. We will be doing all of our routine fire drills, lockdown drills, weather, severe weather drills. And then picnic is that Thursday out at the BCOAC. We're working with the city on, on that. The other thing that is this year are the fire extinguisher trainings. All employees will have to take the fire extinguisher trainings again, so we're getting those scheduled as well. That's all part of that in June. Again, June 26th, make sure you have that on, on your calendars for budget hearings, plan for the entire day next door in the community room. And then just kind of a save the date, August 9th for the annual conservation district tour. They have to officially, I think, decide and set that date in stone, the, the conservation district board does. But they wanted to make sure that that was kind of the date that we're looking at and make sure that you can all get that on your calendars now. So it's more of a save the date at this point, thinking that that though will be the date that it is. I think that's all I've got, unless you have any additional questions for me.
Any questions? And then on your report, you had a letter from the Department of Natural Resources about the underground tank removal program, is it going?
Yes, that was in just correspondence received. So there's information about underground tank removal program. And there's an application form, I believe there's, this information is on our website as well, for anyone who's interested.
All right. 9:07, we'll do quick state's attorney office report. That was quick. So we will start, have one, we'll start on commissioners' reports. Commissioner Vanderwall?
All right, thank you, I don't have a whole lot to report. On April 5th, we had the work session here at the county building and then on Thursday, April 6th, I was able to attend the Taste of Brookings 71. That's all I have, thank you.
Commissioner Bartley?
Also the work session on the 5th. I think that went well, we got through a lot of subjects and a lot of things in appropriate time. Last night was the Brookings Behavioral Health Board meeting. They are starting on their particular plans for a building. ID8 was selected as the architect for that, so, so preliminary stages of, of how many, how big this building, how many rooms we need, how many people we're going to be employing for the next 10 to 15 years, so we build the building big enough to handle all that. So that went well and we'll see some reports on that later as, as those plans develop. They will have a fundraising effort to supplement the funds that the county and the city had given them. And so they're starting that process too, so things are looking good with that and that's the end of my report.
All right, Mr. Jensen, you got one minute.
Session and also had a conservation board meeting on the 6th. Attended the Taste of Brookings at the Club 71. We celebrated Jenna Peterson's graduation from leadership Brookings. Congratulations on that. 11th, we had equalization, equalization boards. On the 13th, I did have a E911 meeting. New siren locations were discussed and some other items.
All right. Pretty close to 9:10, so we'll, we'll move to that. We have a scheduled agenda item at 9:10, action to approve an easement agreement with Brookings Municipal Utilities. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Second. Discussion, comments?
So I thought Chuck May was going to be here to discuss this, but I'm going to bring up the pictures here if I can find. So what they're asking for for this sewer, is it a sewer line, water line, that comes already through the highway shop grounds?
It's a storm, storm sewer.
The easement paperwork, the storm sewer's there, it's been there. The easement paperwork was never filed or recorded and so this is basically cleaning that up. I did have a conversation with Brian, Gus, at our highway superintendent about this, knowing he was going to be on, he doesn't have any issue with this. It's not something new that they're looking at putting in, it's something that already exists. So it's there. It just never got properly recorded, that easement did not. So that is what they're looking to do with this document.
All right. Any Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vanderwall.
Hi.
Bartley.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Hostler.
Hi.
Krogman.
Hi.
Motion carries.
All right, on to commissioner reports. Mr. Hostler?
Yeah, pretty on the 5th, we had the work session, it was nice to see, kind of get our first one in the books and, and figure out what was going on. And then on the 6th, Taste of Brookings up at, up on campus. Again, congratulations, Jennifer, successfully completing leadership Brookings. And that's my report.
All right. Questions there? All right, I had, I was here on the, the 5th also for the work session, also for convening as the board of equalization on the 11th. And then met with officials from the school and the city to update our election agreement with them, with also with Lori. And we did that yesterday, so that will be coming on an agenda item down the road. And that's all I have. Moving session in accordance to the South Dakota codified law 1-25-2, numbers one and four for personnel and contract negotiations. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries.